Good afternoon. Everyone, please rise for the pledge.
I'm an American citizen of America. I'm a Republican voter for which his stance on my nation. I have the right to vote.
I do that, too. But not anymore because...
Call this meeting to order and entertain a motion for the reading and approval of the minutes of last meeting.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Opportunity for the public to address the Board of Commissions only. Nothing? Okay. Proclamation presentation, 230155.
It's a proclamation declaring the week of June 5th through the 9th, 2023, as Child Welfare Professionals Week in Lackawanna County, whereas the week of June 5th through 9th, 2023, has been proclaimed as Child Welfare Professionals Appreciation Week by Governor Josh Shapiro, recognizing the efforts of child welfare professionals serving the children of Pennsylvania. The Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does the same today, recognizing the women and men who staff the Office of Youth and Family Services. And whereas every day in Lackawanna County, children are at risk of child abuse and neglect or have been removed from their homes because of these circumstances. Since 2017, Lackawanna County has seen an increase of 183% in child referrals and 200% in increase in family referrals. Currently, the Office of Family and Youth Services averages over 9,000 children and 4,000 families referred to the agency per year. And whereas child welfare professionals work in difficult and emotional situations with children who have been victimized by physical abuse, sexual abuse, neglect, and other forms of maltreatment. The work of the child welfare professionals may require him or her to enter situations in which one's personal safety may be put at risk. And whereas child welfare professionals selfishly undertake the endeavor to protect Lackawanna County's children, their efforts have averted innumerable injuries and deaths of children in Lackawanna County despite the dramatic impact to their professional lives. And now therefore, we, Jerry Notariani, Debbie Dominic, and Chris Schermac, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim June 5th through the 9th, 2023, to be Child Welfare Professionals Week in Lackawanna County. I think we have some folks here today.
Mr. Browning?
Yep, there's Bill, yep.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have with us case workers Rob Zavislak, Amy Helkowsky, our supervisors Lisa Sahara, and Jen... I'm sorry, we have about six Jennifers, and so I'm always thinking of Jen Bragg and Kelly Atkinson. So if they could join me at the podium...
Sure. Yeah, they can. We got a picture with the proclamation. Absolutely. They are the hardest working people I've ever worked with, so... All right. Great. So...
Yeah, come on up. We'll get a picture taken.
I've seen it 100 times, but I just...
It's a different one you're hearing. All right, how are you?
I'm moving chairs.
They all know I am.
No.
And I take a pic.
Let's have a couple of you.
Don't move.
Down here is two.
Small subject.
Yep.
Hold that. That's the enough side here.
So everybody step one person this way.
One person.
I could have been a little more subtle, sorry.
Okay, here we are. Everybody look at me and smile. Get a couple of them. One more.
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
How are you?
Okay, that is a very difficult job, and they certainly are underpaid. I'd like to thank them. Okay, resolution 230154, approving current payables.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County's general fund numbers, 357835-359421, inclusive, totaling $5,767,293.19. The county's electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $26,660,736.92. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 7th, 2023. Mr. Chairman.
Anybody have any questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230138.
This is awarding municipal electronic recycling collection event grants. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby award Lackawanna County Municipal Electronic Recycling Collection Event Grants to the following municipalities and their residents. Archibald, Covington, Jessup, Mayfield, Music, Roaring Brook, and Scott Township. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 7th, 2023. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is our Director of Environmental Sustainability, Ms. Nicole Shapiro.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The seven municipalities that Chief Jeffers just mentioned have all met the prerequisites for our municipal electronics recycling event grant. This grant will reimburse them up to $1,000 each for the cost they incurred for having such an event. These events do make a huge impact and put a dent in our waste electronics problem here in Lackawanna County. Last year, with the help of our grant, we got about 53.94 tons or 107,000 pounds of electronics out of the county, so...
You're doing a great job, Nicole.
Thanks. Any questions?
These bounce around, like, year after year, they're different municipalities, right?
Yes. So if they get a grant this year, they'll have to wait two grant cycles until they can apply again. So we're hoping to have it again next year and so that, you know, we can kind of make our way and everybody can get a shot every few years of having an event. So they've been going very smoothly, so I think it's an awesome project we got involved in.
Good. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 230139.
This is approving the Hazardous Materials Response Fund Grant. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the submission of the 2023-2024 Hazardous Materials Response Fund Grant for the Department of Emergency Management. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 7th, 2023. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is our EMA Director, Mr. Tom Taylor.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
This is the Hazardous Materials Response Fund Grant. It helps support our emergency hazardous response program for the county. Helps us purchase consumables that are used on motor vehicle accidents with large-scale diesel spills and things like that, so this helps cover the cost.
Anyone have any questions for Tom?
Nope.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Resolution 230140.
Check your phone. Approve the Area Agency on Aging Amendments. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Area Agency on Aging Amendments for the fiscal year 2023 through 2023 with Global Empire LLC, DMA GHD Home Care, CHC Compassionate In-Home Personal Care, Telesponsor Senior Services, Comprehensive Medical Home Care, Lackawanna College Scholarship Program, and Neighbor Works Northeastern Pennsylvania. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 7th, 2023. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is our Director of Human Services, Mr. Bill Browning.
Morning, Commissioners. These amendments are really about increasing the quality of services to our aging population. So the one is, we're actually paying to increase clearances for the safety of home care providers. Surprisingly, the state does not require, the State Department of Health does not require criminal clearances or any type of background checks, and so we will be paying for that. And obviously, in Lackawanna County, we're requiring that. So in order to offset the cost of doing that, that's what the amendments for Global Empire CHC, Telesponsor Comprehensive. The scholarship program is to enable the employees to receive advanced degrees or degrees in their field. And then with Neighbor Works, primarily involves the successful Echo Project. That's the project, if you remember, Jason Institute, Jason Kevulage, where tiny homes are placed on relatives' property, which allows them to live in their home and without having to go into nursing homes or other sustained living facilities.
Right. Anyone have any questions for Bill? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230141.
Approving the Area Agency on Aging Professional Service Agreements. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Area Agency on Aging Professional Service Agreements for fiscal year '23 through '26 with Outreach Center for Community Resources, Dietitian Linda Stayer, Connect America, Cooney Medical Supply, Blair County Senior Services, Jewish Family Services, and the United Way. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 7th, 2023. Once again, Mr. Chairman here is Director Browning.
Browning?
These are just reauthorization of existing contracts for the fiscal year beginning '23 through '26 in aging. They are three-year contracts. So, and it ranges from medical evaluations to dietary evaluations. We provide services for on-call as well as some care management services and outreach.
Thank you. Anyone have questions for Bill? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230142.
Approving Provider Contracts for the Office of BHIDEI. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Provider Contracts between the Department of Human Services, Lackawanna Susquehanna Behavioral Health Intellectual Disabilities Early Intervention Program, and their providers for the fiscal year '23 through '24 with allocations totaling $12,180,100 as attached here, too. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 7th, 2023. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is the Director of Behavioral Health, Ms. Mickey Drishol.
Good morning, good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you very much. These contracts are renewals of 44 human, with 44 human services providers to support the needs of approximately 17,394 individuals throughout Lackawanna and Susquehanna Counties. These services are for housing and supports for people with serious mental illness, forensic residential treatment facilities for individuals with mental illness, and criminal justice involvement, reentry housing for individuals with serious mental illness incarcerated at the Lackawanna County Prison, emergency and crisis services, day supports, and other various supports for individuals with intellectual disabilities and/or autism, supportive employment services, case management services for children and adults, forensic case management, occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy, and other various therapies for infants and toddlers and their parents and guardians. Do you have any questions?
Nope, I don't. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Resolution 230143.
It's authorizing the exception to the County Ethics Code, whereas Lackawanna County is a third-class county existing pursuant to the law of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and whereas Lackawanna County has adopted the Code of Ethics on January 8th, 2008, which prohibits an employee of Lackawanna County from having a financial interest in any firm or organization which does business with the county. And whereas Jesse Van Dusen is a full-time county employee with the Coroner's Office, and whereas the Lackawanna County Office of Youth and Family Services publicly advertised for services for the Stable Instruction and Coordination Program with the county's EQUINS, a program that provides therapy for underprivileged and abused children in Lackawanna County, and whereas the position requires a skilled and experienced individual who is trained to work with horses, and Mr. Van Dusen is the only applicant who applied for said position, and whereas Mr. Van Dusen has the skills and experience to perform and run the Stable Program Instruction and Coordination Program for the Lackawanna County Office of Youth and Family Services, and whereas the Commissioners of Lackawanna County believes it to be in the best interests of Lackawanna County to continue this program for underprivileged and abused children by exempting Mr. Van Dusen from the prohibition set forth in the County Code of Ethics and allowing him to run the Stable Program for the Office of Youth and Family Services. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby resolve the following. Number one, an exception to the County Code of Ethics is hereby created to allow Jesse Van Dusen to work as a full-time county employee and to enter into a contract with the county to run the Stable Program of Instruction and Coordination Program through the Lackawanna County Office of Youth and Family Services. Number two, Mr. Van Dusen's contract shall not interfere with his full-time position with the Lackawanna County Coroner's Office. And number three, said contract shall be for a period of one year commencing on January, July 1st, 2023, and terminating on June 30th, 2024, and shall be annually submitted for RFQ or RFP process by the Office of Youth and Family Services. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 7th, 2023. Mr. Chairman, once again here is Director Browning.
Commissioners, Jesse is absolutely critical to our program, and as Chief Jeffers indicated, he is the sole person that responded, so we hope you entertain...
We've gone through this before, right, Bill?
We've gone through this before, and he is the only one. Because of the special skill set that he has, there are very few, apparently, people that have that skill set.
Are interested in doing this. Okay. Anyone have any questions for Bill?
Nope.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230144.
Approve the Office of Youth and Family Services Professional Service Agreements. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Service Professional Service Agreements for the fiscal year '23 through '24 with the following. The Advocacy Alliance, Center for Health and Human Services Research and Action, Michael Kenny, Anthony LaBazi, DeSanto Barlow Law, George Getz Esquire, Kim Jean Betty Esquire, Teresa Molsky Pizak Esquire, Women's Resource Center, Barbara Hart Justice Center, William Women's Resource Center, the Catherine McCauley Center, the Friendship House, the Grant Counseling Center, Forensics Counseling Associates, Jewish Family Services, Thomas Maldouni, Caesar Reyes Mateo Interpreting, Geneva Worldwide Incorporated Outreach, Richard Gold Service Access and Management Incorporated. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 7th, 2023. Mr. Chairman, once again here is Director Browning.
These, with the exception of Service Access and Management, are just a continuity of existing contracts with these professional services, runs from counseling service, mediation services, legal services, and interpretation. So again, these are, most of these contracts have been in existence for well over a decade with the exception of Service Access and Management, which will assist us in providing services to families.
Anyone have any questions for Bill?
I, maybe it's a stupid question, I just have eight, I do have a question. So when we're looking at the professional services, it shows amounts not to exceed, but when we drop down to the provider agreements, there is not that?
We're required to have contracts with any placement where we potentially place a child, so that's why there is no contract amount. Some of these facilities, we may never use.
Okay, yeah.
But we have to have a contract in which, if I may, just, there was another one for '22 and the remainder of '23, the Forget Me Not one, which is also included in the '23-'24. And the reason for that is, it was a resource that we didn't know existed, we had a very difficult-to-place youth, and so we had to enter into an agreement with that facility. But to be compliant with state regulation, we do have to have a contract with them prior to June 30th of 2023.
We're going to read that in a couple resolutions.
Okay.
Hold it out to do it separately.
Anyone else have any other questions for Bill? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230145.
This is approving the Office of Youth and Family Service Provider Agreements. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Service Provider Agreements for the fiscal year '23 through '24 with the following. Children's Choice, City Mission Living Stones, Clear Vision, Common Sense Adoption, Cornell Abraxas Group LLC, the Diagon Child and Family and Community Ministries, Diversified Treatment Alternative Drug and Alcohol Treatment Services, Families United Network, Family Care for Children and Youth Incorporated, Forget Me Not Children and Youth Services, the Friendship House, George Junior Republic, Impact Project, Institute for Human Resources and Services, the National Mentor Healthcare LLC, Outside-in School of Experimental Education LLC, Presley Ridge Professional Family Care Services LLC, and the White Deer Run DBA Cove Prep. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 7th, 2023. Once again, here is Director Browning.
As indicated in the discussion with Commissioner Schermac, these are mostly out-of-home placement providers. All of them are providers that we have contracted with prior, with the exception of Forget Me Not, which is a new one.
Anyone have any other questions for Bill?
Nope.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks, Bill. Resolution 230146.
This is Amendment Resolution approving the Office of Youth and Family Services Detention Center Agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Service Detention Center Agreement for the fiscal year '23 through '24 with Jefferson County, Ohio, at $205 per day. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 7th, 2023. Mr. Chairman here is Director Browning.
This allows us to place kids that require restrictive setting, a detention setting. Unfortunately, in Ohio, there is a lack of detention beds within the state of Pennsylvania, which is why we have to contract as far out as Ohio.
Certainly is a problem. Okay, anyone have any questions for Bill? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230147.
Approving an Office of Youth and Family Services Provider Agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services and Juvenile Probation Provider Agreement for the fiscal year '22 through '23 with Forget Me Not Children and Youth Services Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 7th, 2023. Mr. Chairman, Director Browning had just previously explained that to you, to the board.
This is the one I jumped the gun on because I had the wrong order on my list, so same thing, we just have to have a contract if we can't use any provider, and it has to have a contract prior to June 30th, which is the end of the state fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? No. Entertain a resolution or a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, Billy.
Resolution 230148.
Entering into a memorandum of understanding with the AOPC, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Administrative Office of the Pennsylvania Courts. The AOPC shall provide $37,877 to support the Drug Court, Co-Orcurring Court, DUI Court, Family Court, Veterans Court, and Mental Health Court. The grant will run from April 1st, 2023, through March 31st, 2024. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 7th, 2023. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is the Treatment Court Project Director, Mr. Gregory Betts.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So as Chief Jeffers said, this MOU from the Administrative Offices of Pennsylvania Courts is for $37,877 for six of our treatment courts. This money is used to fund things like incentives and gift cards, transportation, which would be like Uber and Lyft for our participants, some training for staff, program supplies, graduation supplies, and the same, you know, stuff like that. This is a continuation of grants that we have gotten in previous years. Any questions?
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Anyone have any more questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 230149.
Entering into a second amendment for food service management agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a second amendment to food service management agreement between the Lackawanna County Prison and Aramark Correctional Services LLC, after receiving the recommendation of the prison board for, from February 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2023. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 7th, 2023. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. David Bolzoni.
Good afternoon, everyone. With this proposed Aramark agreement, the chronology is important to follow. The initial Aramark inquiry regarding a cost adjustment to the contract came in in December 2022. The company's rationale was that the current cost of $1.189 per prisoner equated to a loss of approximately $7,500 a week or $390,000 annually. A comparison to county prisoner costs within the Aramark system seemed to support their argument, which is the reason why we gave it a thorough review. Lackawanna, again, at $1.189, Chester at $1.314, Lancaster at $1.495, Dauphin at $1.638, and Delaware at $1.672. Aramark initially proposed a two-tier increase, $1.332 until September 1st of 2023, and then $1.438 through 2024. Subsequent adjustments would be based exclusively on a CPI food measure, so Consumer Price Index food measure. They were looking to lock in adjustments based exclusively on what that, what that price index was. The initial compromise that we viewed internally was at $1.27 prisoner. Eventually, we looked at a more reasonable cost as, at $1.3135. Future increases, we've always taken the position, would have to be subject to negotiation and would not be based exclusively on a price index. Eventually, the parties settled on $1.310. Under an 800 prisoner count, the budget impact was a little over $105, almost $106,000. Using a more concise measure, and we took an average of 729 prisoners for 2022, the budget impact was $96,589. That's favorable to budget, so that still gives us a sufficient amount of variance within the budget in order to be able to cover that cost adjustment, which is important to note. If the prisoner count remains at 729, the positive budget variance is approximately $97,000. So we still have approximately that much variance within the budget in order to cover that cost. If we take the adjustment to staff meals, which is approximately $19,000, the positive variance to budget is almost $78,000. So we've got enough room to cover it. I think what's important to consider are what our options were. So we could have invoked the 90-day termination clause and put it out to bid. Now, that may not have been the best alternative, given the fact that we're still looking at fairly measurable inflation. So putting it out to bid, knowing where our costs stood within their system to begin with, put us at risk of receiving bids that would have exceeded the $1.31 that we had negotiated favorably with Aramark. So my recommendation is that we approve the agreement based on the provisions that were negotiated by a number of people within the county, not just including myself, but also Chief of Staff Jeffers and Solicitor Ruggiero. Everyone did a fantastic job in really pushing this to a conclusion.
Anyone have any questions for Dave on that?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230150.
Entering into an agreement with Siemens. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an agreement with Siemens Industry Incorporated for preventative maintenance on the Lackawanna for preventative maintenance on the Lackawanna County Courthouse and the Lackawanna County Prison, starting February 1st, 2023, and ending through December 31st, 2023, for a cost of $41,456. Adopted at the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 7th, 2023. Once again, Mr. Chairman, here is the CFO, Mr. Bolzoni.
Again, chronology is important here, and I'm going to go through some of it, but I'm also going to address this resolution and the subsequent two, because they're all actually interrelated. So, the maintenance agreement that had expired was a five-year agreement that was executed in 2018 with McClure as the contractor that had overseen all of the energy management provisions within the county, and that included the work that was being done by Siemens, by Tecogen, and by NRG. That cost was $1,293,591. That agreement and the subsequent renewal of that agreement was approved by the Commissioners. That agreement expired in February of 2023. Initially, McClure had proposed a revised five-year agreement valued at a little over $2 million. Internally, we thought that cost was unacceptable, and we looked at various alternatives in order to be able to reduce it. Subsequently, with some assistance from Mark Doer and also from Joe Sinflone at the prison, we were able to realize a cost from McClure of $813,022. So, that's a fairly substantial reduction in what their original proposal was. The difference was that with the various subcontractors that have been involved in these energy maintenance projects, Siemens, NRG, Tecogen, instead of McClure serving as the intermediary, where anytime work had to be done, the maintenance departments would have to contact McClure, who would then contact the subcontractors in order to get the work done, we now go directly to the subcontractors to get the work done. That created that savings. That's the reason for these agreements. All of these sub-agreements had expired, so in renewing them, we're now renewing them to fall in line with the agreement that we have with McClure, that allows us to go to Siemens directly to bring them in for work, NRG directly, as well as Tecogen. So, there's still a fairly substantial savings there, even though we're executing contracts individually with all these subcontractors, and this is principally control work for HVAC systems, although Tecogen is involved with the cogeneration system at the prison. So, if you think about it, if we were looking at gross savings of about $1.2 million in the revised McClure contract, now we're reducing that by the various contracts that we're using with subcontractors. So, $41,456 with Siemens, $20,000 with Tecogen, $25,100 with NRG. So, there's still a fairly substantial savings there in the way this was revised. So, again, my thanks for, to the input to Mark Doer and also to Joe Sinflone. I thought their ideas were very good.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Dave? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
My question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230151.
Accepting the proposal from Tecogen Incorporated. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an agreement with Tecogen Incorporated for maintenance services for cogeneration system at the Lackawanna County Prison. It's a five-year agreement to commence on May 1st, 2023. Adopted at the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 7th, 2023. Mr. Chairman, the CFO had just explained all this.
Thanks, Dave. Anyone have any more questions for Dave on that?
Nope.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
My question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And Resolution 230152.
Entering into an agreement with NRG Controls North Incorporated. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an agreement with NRG Controls Incorporated for predictive and preventative maintenance on heating, ventilation, and air conditioning controls using Honeywell and Schneider Electric Systems. It's a three-year contract, it's a three-year agreement, effective May 1st, 2023, with a cost, total cost of $76,050. Adopted at the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 7th, 2023. I know the CFO went through all this for you, and it didn't sound very entertaining, but he saved us a lot of money.
Yeah.
And that's really what the outcome is here.
Great job, Dave. Any more questions for Dave? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
My question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, motion 230153.
Mr. Chairman, this is a motion, a motion to accept the bid submission from Hudak Waterproofing Company, 601 North Main Street, Taylor, Pennsylvania, 18517, the lowest, most responsible bidder for the concrete surface preparation in advance of the mural art project in the amount of $128,000. Any questions for this? Our Arts and Cultural Director, Ms. Maureen McGuigan, can answer for you.
Maureen?
Can you explain all that about the concrete?
Sure, I'm, maybe not an expert, but I know a lot more than I did last year. Okay, do you want me to kind of go into-
This is something we're required to do by-
Oh, absolutely. So, it's a big, exciting project, but big is the literal word there. So, mural technology has superimproved since that mural was first installed, and the key, a big key of it is the priming and the wall preparation. Paint technology is really high-tech now, and if you do it right, if you, the first time, you won't have to be repainting and repairing it every five years. So, this mural, if we prime it right, should possibly last 30, maybe even 40 years, and still be pretty vibrant.
A big cost savings long-term.
Yeah, long-term, yeah. Do it once.
The prep work for it.
Yeah, you wouldn't, yeah, the painting part's important, but, but the prep is almost more important.
Yeah. Okay, I'll make that motion to accept it.
Second.
Any questions? My question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Maureen.
Thank you, Maureen.
Okay. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Joan. Joan Hoda-Wan at Scranton. First, I want to thank David Isley for the service that he gave to the veterans of Lackawanna County. You'd have to be a veteran who talks to him and is the recipient of those services to understand the difference that he made during his tenure here in Lackawanna County, not just in terms of the amount of money he helped veterans recoup, but he's a very people-oriented individual, very professional. And I think the most notable thing about him is the passion that he brought to his position in the Veterans Affairs Office. Bad news is, he's leaving. Good news is, he trains his staff well. So, I wish him all the luck in the world as he moves on in his career. The second thing I'd like to ask is, this smoke that we are enduring, courtesy of Canada. I know that the county and even the city of Scranton are developing health departments. The only thing I've seen the last day or two in terms of advice and guidance and warnings has been coming from weather forecasters. Have we had anything, have you had any advice from your healthcare personnel?
We have it. It's on our website now.
On the website. Now, you might want to, in addition to putting it on the website, you know, in the newspaper, on the radio stations, on the TV stations, my personal feeling is that, I've never seen anything like this in the 24 years I've been back in Scranton, but I suspect that this is not the last time a thing like this is going to happen. If you look at the history of wildfires on the west coast of our own country, I think this may happen again and again, and I do think it's a serious health issue. We have a lot of homeless who are outside 24/7, and so, and also, we have a lot of employees like Scranton's DPW picking up trash every day. So, I hope that this is something that we are proactive about and keep the people informed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, first, the Department of Health did issue a advisory about, about 11 o'clock this morning, when it went into detail on what everything, the smoke. Our EMA Director, Tom Taylor, is still here and is keeping this updated. The smoke is actually going to be the worst today between 2:30 and 5:30, right around 3 o'clock, it's going to be the worst it's been in the last two days. It's not going to dissipate until about 3 o'clock in the morning, on Friday morning, at best. So, for the next two days, advisories are, you know, to wear a mask if you're going to be outside for a long period of time. Our workers ourselves have been issued masks in the parks, in roads and bridges. The maintenance men are staying inside the buildings. Tom, is there anything else that we need to address on that, if you could?
I have a couple.
Please.
Just to put into perspective on how big the wildfire is in Canada, it is nine-and-a-quarter million acres that's burning, and to put that in perspective, it's bigger than the state of Connecticut, and the jet stream has just so happened to be coming east. The, right now, the air quality index is at 222, which is 30 points higher than yesterday. So, if you don't have to be outside, I'd recommend staying inside. That's really all I have.
And the National Weather Service issued this?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the National Weather Service is updating all the emergency management agencies through the state, through Pima and FEMA, and it's a 17-year 20, it's a seven, it's 17 times higher than the 20-year high this year, the wildfires coming out of Canada. There's currently 425 wildfires burning right now.
We could send this active map to the press?
Yep. And that's a, that's a website, airnow.gov, and that, that'll, that can keep you updated. That's a public website, so.
All right. Anyone else from the public? Commissioners, other business. Mr. Schermack.
Well, I want to say what Joan said, I actually had Dave Isley on my mind. He did a phenomenal job. His office does a great job. They'll continue to do that, and we didn't lose him totally. He's still, he's still within a phone call away, and he's working for the federal government, so, you know, we still have him as a resource. But he did, he, excellent job. Also, we had our county fair over last weekend, with a little hiccup in the weather on Friday. I think it was, we'll wait and see the numbers, but it looked like it was fairly, fairly busy Thursday, Friday. I know I was there. It was extremely hot. The water park was busy. A lot of people were enjoying that. So, hopefully, hopefully people like that, and we can, we can move on till next year. So, we'll see how, we'll see what the numbers look like when they get that all figured out. And the only other thing I had was the weather and the smoke, but we covered that, so that's it for me.
Commissioner Dymlik?
I just wanted to thank my co-commissioners for moving today's meeting to noon to accommodate my son's kindergarten graduation.
I know. You know, I have to say, like, in addition to, where did I wrote it down? In addition to graduating today, I'm allowed to brag a little bit, I'm a mother, so just bear with me here. They had awards, kind of like when seniors, they have award night, and you know, the best smile or best whatever. Well, they had a kindergarten class award ceremony, and Dylan received the Sweetie Pie Award for having the kindest and biggest heart around, and parenting is difficult, single parenting is impossible. Sometimes it feels like it, and sometimes it feels like I fail at everything, sometimes I'm second guessing everything. So, when he received that, it was almost like I must be doing something right, because he's such a good, sweet, kind little boy. So, today is his day. So, congratulations, Dylan.
I hear Nanny the car.
No, he wants to sing one of the songs for you guys, but we'll pass on that, but. So, thank you to my co-commissioners for accommodating me, and that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Dave did a, do a great job for us, and as Chris said, he's not gone, he's just a little further away. It'll go forward, we'll find a decent replacement for him.
We'll find him, right?
Yeah, we'll find him. All right. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion. Second.
My question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.